All right, um, we left off with the sheriff, but then I had to cut him short, so we're gonna get him, we're gonna get him like, we'll get you in a minute sheriff, I promise. So now we're gonna present our road department proposal for a culvert replacement in Inglis and on Butler Road and along C forty-eight. Unfortunately, due to some technical difficulties, our overhead is not gonna work, so. Follow along in session if you can. If you have any questions, please say it during the presentation.
Thank you, gentlemen. Like you mentioned, this is a presenting proposal, information regarding culvert replacement in Inglis, Butler Road. Uh, there was actually a presentation, but like the chairman said, it would be difficult. I apologize for that. What we do have, uh, among when we present this, this, there's an estimated cost involved in all this. We, uh, y'all have the, uh, the pamphlets that we handed out, which one? But we have an estimated cost that we are actually looking at. This cost does, uh, include a total of, an estimated total of a hundred and twelve culvert pipes in the Inglis area. That being said, what we're looking at on the county roads that we maintain at this time, the estimated cost with parts and labor that came in is ninety-six thousand five hundred and twenty-five cents. Now, we also looked at some areas in the Inglis area, and that cost came in, you know, for the city of Inglis at nine thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents. There's also some more areas, and like I say, this is just a projection of what we have, you know, really identified right now. There's some other areas that I actually got a chance to look at yesterday that is not in this cost, so it may increase. I would also like to make it known that we did not budget for this. This is something that, you know, was unexpected, and, uh, right now, we have not identified where we're going to get funds from, or what, you know, section. So, you know, that also being said, uh, if the commission has any questions about this.
I think y'all done the right thing, Casey, because I think I did, and I remember that the board asked to get a cost, a projected cost to this. And, uh, I believe that y'all have done that very good job. Yeah, and I expected it to be a little bit more than this. I really did. It's a lot of money, but I think that, if I remember right, we had said that just as soon as we got a cost, we had showed the cost, the breakdown of the cost, and then the water levels proceeded enough that there were, that we would go in there and, uh, do some replacements. Knowing that this dollar amount was not budgeted for. Then, uh, and then I think this comes into the board's court as to who we want to proceed and move forward at this point, or are we even talking about where the funds are gonna come from first, or they're gonna move forward?
Casey, is this, this is not a complete fix, is it?
No, sir, there's still some other areas that was, you know, brought to my attention yesterday evening, or early, I mean, late, late morning yesterday evening. And we still have to address those issues also. So, uh, this is going to be ongoing procedure. I mean, this, this, this is not going to be the end of it, to be honest about it. Uh, there's first, further issues on, uh, C forty at the intersection of C forty and C forty-eight that we need to actually address. Um, and we, I, I actually need to check on some roadway issues. So, uh, and I apologize about that, we just didn't get a chance.
But Commissioner, that's what I was alluding to, yeah, this, when you say you thought it'd be more, it will be more. But we wanted a starting point from what the road department felt, because this is not engineered out. This is just with their experience and expertise on what they feel like we can go in there and start to try to alleviate this from happening again. But it's not a, it definitely is not a complete fix throughout the whole system down there.
Right.
At all. Now, I will say, in addition to that, talking about not budgeted, we have a, a concern right now, well, a situation that needs to be addressed and is being addressed, and that is on Dock Street and Cedar Key. Something beyond our control, and we don't know what that expense is gonna be, but it, the sooner the better on that also, so that wasn't budgeted either. So, anything that is expended out of road department is gonna have to come from other line items within the road department. Might be talking, you know, I don't know just what all they have in their forecast for this year, but anything we do now that's not budgeted is gonna have to come from other budgeted items for this year that the road department look to do.
Casey, do you have any question to do this for? Yes, there was also, uh, I would like to mention that, we have talked with, uh, FDOP, and we've talked with the Division of Porters. They're going to get back with us to see if they can, you know, help us out with any assistance with, uh, with equipment. I, I, when they're gonna be able to get back with us, you know, they, they still have to go with the higher ups. But as Mr. Doherty, uh, mentioned just now, we did get a cost on a lease equipment, which is considered, called a grade all. That grade all with, uh, is a three-month lease, lease period. We have no choice when we do lease this piece of equipment, it is for three months. At that price, or the price, or the quote, excuse me, the quote in that three-month period would be twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. If we go beyond that, and I did have a discussion with them, if we did go beyond that three-month period. So I, I mean, that quote would be an additional twenty-five hundred dollars per week. Uh, what would they make more?
Was the grade all factor in, that's one oh six, three eighty-eight, fifty-five?
It was not.
Did FDOP say how far they would go?
No, sir, what they did is when we met with them yesterday, they actually were going to look over the job, consult, you know, with whoever they needed to consult with, and then get back with us and see what, if anything, they could do, you know, to help us out, further beyond there.
What about the starting point? Are you gonna have to start, what are we talking about yesterday?
Well, the starting point actually needs to be the ending position. If we were to start on this, I would probably recommend working backwards. Because if we work backwards, at least if there was another condition like we had this past, uh, summer, at least at the very end, that problem will be solved, and we wouldn't be piling a bunch of order. We, if we start at the beginning, and we clean out all this area at the beginning, and it-
You're talking about starting at nineteen and working?
No, no matter what I say.
No, what I'm saying is, this starts at nineteen.
No, actually, that's, that starts at, uh, at Butler Road, instead of Butler Road.
Okay, but where we need to start at the end?
Would be at one position, one position would be at, uh, the canal, at Drum and Bank off of C forty. The other, uh, ending point that we identified right now is actually, um, Cattle Creek, is another ending point. Because when the sessions came up, that was a concern for Yankee Town, was Cattle Creek. So that would be another ending point right there. So what we, my recommendation would be to actually start at the end of these two areas, and then work backwards to the front.
And that's what we don't have?
Well, that's the additional. We stopped actually, as far as this estimated cost, was actually shy of Cattle Creek on C forty-eight. But there's more issues that, and, you know, at that intersection of C forty-eight and C forty. So there's still, this is still an ongoing. I mean, this is, uh, something to kind of prepare you for what's coming.
So we can break it down into phases?
That would probably be a good suggestion right there, and if that was, uh, the case, you know, and if we could find the funds within our budget, it wouldn't be as, you know, much of a hit right now, as, you know, that, that overall.
As you know, the weather condition, you going, that three-month thing going to be long.
And, and you know, that's the thing about it, if, if the good Lord is willing, you know, uh, and we are able to continuously work for three months, yes, that's, you know, the grade all is a great idea. That you just gotta miss it. Weather definitely depends on a lot of this stuff. Um, you know, the holidays, this is no tomorrow project. This is something that's going to be, I mean, it, I'm not even gonna predict when we're gonna get started on it, but weather does play a big role in, in all of this. And if we get, you know, back to that season, you know, and everybody calls it the holidays of summer, if we get back to that season, and, you know, hopefully we'll be, you know, educated ourselves enough to where we will not rent or lease a piece of equipment when we know these holidays, you know, summer are coming.
We can maybe get started on it before that.
Right.
For sure. The other thing that I will add is, is in my explanation, the way it's been explained to me, how the grade all works is actually, it'll work whenever it's wet. Much better than a backhoe or a trackhoe or anything else, and that tar is bad. But we definitely don't wanna work whenever it's wet, can't see what you're doing, it's easy. Um, but I, I think we can, we can work with finance and try to figure out where we can move some funds around, and get started on this certain, we don't wanna start, of course, ever before the first of the year because of vacation, because of the holidays, you know, we need to just get started, and then you have to stop. My opinion is we need to get on it in the early spring, because we can't last through the droughts.
Casey, have we looked in any federal state grants out there that could happen to this?
Uh, I, I was going to check with, uh, Ms. Tisha Whitehurst, uh, but at this time, I believe she's on maternity leave. And when she gets back, then that will be something else that we can look into as far as, you know, maybe something to help fund us.
I, I know, it's waiting on us to get ours out of the way.
And Mr. Dean has looked into some funding, and he might wanna speak to that or something for USDA, but, uh...
Um, the USDA, the letter I received from USDA said to take it and help us at this time, so we may have to go a different angle on that, but-
I mean, we are looking.
One of my concerns, or not really a concern, but one of the parts of this project is, uh, a lot of, if you will, residential culverts in a particular neighborhood. I mean, we could get some sort of, uh, uh, some help there with some sort of neighborhood revitalization, stabilization, something to do along those lines. I mean, I know normally stabilization is keeping places from getting run down, but if you run into a problem where you have a bunch of houses that continuously flood and fall into disrepair because people have moved away from them, you have an unstable neighborhood, so, um...
The neighborhood is a very, that's a very far end, as well.
Which is the neigh, is the neighborhood, is it in the city or is that neighborhood in the-
Inglewood is in the county, it's okay, it's county, I think. Now, Casey, um-
Inglewood?
Yeah, Casey acre, Casey, Inglis Acres, Unit One, is city.
But if you look at this estimate, there's a-
This is, it's broke down between the two, between county and it's broke down.
All this fifteen-inch culvert, twenty-two hundred feet of it, that, that's mostly in that neighborhood, correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, that's, that's a-
Yeah, the fifteen-inch culvert?
A large part of the cost there, so, um...
Now, for the drainage for that subdivision, now, is the drainage for there, will it drain over by the bank and out through the old power plant?
Yes, that's, that's the intention on it, is Inglewood and Casey, uh, Inglis Acres. That drainage will head towards the, uh, drains canal by Drum and Bank off of C forty.
So that's not gonna be done into the Cattle Creek?
Correct. That's one of the concerns that we actually got terrified yesterday when, when, uh, in discussion. You know, what was going to put it on Yankee Town, and that was a concern as far as all that drainage was going for Yankee Town. And then we found out that was not the issue, it was actually coming out, like I just now mentioned, at the intersect, or the Drum and Bank and C forty, and that-
To the power plant.
To the power plant. And then, then that's when we found about, found out about other issues that deal with Cattle Creek, and, you know, what their concerns were at that area, that, that intersection of C forty and C forty-eight. So it's still, you know, still an ongoing process. We find out a little bit more information, a little bit more input, you know, day to day, and we're just trying to address it, you know, uh, here and there.
Casey, uh, I don't know why this had occurred to me earlier, uh, but, um, we're talking about putting this water into that canal.
Yes.
Whose canal is that? I mean, are we gonna run into a problem where we? Now?
If I'm not mistaken, that now is the city's canal. Can you get a drop to power plant, Robert? Yes. I, I'll stop. Once it goes, you know, from forty back north, the unending is it is the city's canal.
I, I can answer that. Uh, it is the city's from back, uh, to Ingle, toward Inglewood Estates, but after you cross C forty, that is Duke Powers', uh, property. And I'm not sure about that ditch.
Right.
They didn't build my new plant, they're gonna get some water.
A wood building or a-
Just work over Casey, ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars.
Yes.
Be very lowish, so this factors go-
It, it has the potential of going much higher. It has the potential of going much higher.
I can see, but I can't. And town of Inglewood, nine thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Yes, sir, uh, that was, yeah, that was parts and, you know, labor, um, you know, this clean out culverts, rock, so forth and so on.
Okay, if there's, can we take a break here from the board and open up to the floor? Ms. Mayor Weiss?
Um, yesterday I had forwarded to Casey two grant, after grant, uh, possibilities that we hope Tisha can look into for the county, and, uh, they were forwarded to us by, uh, Dan Hilliard from Moore, so hopefully that will help relieve some of the costs.
And, and to clarify, I think Tisha is on maternity leave, I think she's working from home.
She's working from home, limited hours.
Sooner rather than later.
Ms. Cannon?
Mr. Chairman, on a scale like the weather service uses, like hundred to flood, two hundred, three, four, five, what percentage would that remedy if the completion time, whenever that might be?
I'll be honest with you, I haven't done those calculations or, I got those calculations, Ms. Cannon.
Oh, and what is the problem with the stocks leak in Cedar Key?
There's a void underneath of it. But it can be remedied, quite easily. We, we've actually, um, speaking to the construction department, you know, the, uh, road department construction guys, that we've had this problem before, and it's been remedied. Uh, they just go in and fill it. Problem is, to kind of estimate is how big it is.
This is a different, like, yet, but it's the same.
Same sort of problem. Yes, sir?
Um, I'm probably speaking about something that I don't know anything about, but what about the Army Corps Engineers? I mean, they're kind of special at this kind of stuff.
That would be, uh, something else to check into with this, you know, this time. We're, we're not, you know, trying to take away any options. What we're trying to do is, you know, present something that we have seen right now, and we have identified, and then we're going to see if we can, you know, what kind of direction the board would like to go in, go in, and then we just kind of proceed.
And to get folks up to speed, I'll give you a second, Terry. Uh, this was a problem that was presented to us in the summer, uh, where we had an extreme rain event, and, uh, the direction from this board was to the road department was to get a plan and get it sooner rather than later. We didn't want anybody dragging their feet, and that's why, um, they have, they have put together this plan, and, and there are additions to it, there are other options, the Army Corps Engineers is a very good option potentially. Um, so this isn't the final, this is just kind of a, this is where we are so far, um, kind of preparing us for what we may face. Terry?
Well, two things, are, are you, uh, this sounds like you're gonna do this without engineering, or are you gonna try to do it with engineering?
Right now, this is just a proposal of what we've identified as, as what some of the areas of, you know, where the problems were. As far as engineering, it has not been engineered right now.
One of the, 'cause, uh, when I was writing this story originally, one of the big problem areas that seemed to be, was this fairly large bridge on Butler Road that was right pretty close to Mrs. Willis's property. But when that got too much water flowing to it, it flooded neighboring properties. But it doesn't sound like that would be the, where you'd be the starting point based on what Casey was talking about just a minute ago, unless I'm-
No, you, you're correct, as far as the starting point would actually be the ending, where we end up at. An area that was identified, uh, to me yesterday was Cattle Creek. And we have to still investigate Cattle Creek, which now becomes the new ending point. So when I say the starting point, it's fix it backwards. If you fix it backwards, if there's any, you know, flow there, then we've already eliminated the problem at the end, to where, like you just now mentioned, it's gonna flood out whoever, so we wanna fix the problem to where it gets out, you know. Hopefully it'll go to the Gulf, um, at the end of Cattle Creek, when it flows down to Cattle Creek. That's the intention.
But you wouldn't start right there with the big flooding problem was, right next to Mrs. Willis's house, Butler Road. You wouldn't start there.
No, like I say, if the project, my suggestion is what I would say. My suggestion would be to start at the end and work back up to Mrs. Willis's house.
The other thing I wanted to just mention is, whether the forecast is accurate or not, there's supposed to be an alineo starting in January with excessive rains, so there's liable to be problems.
Yeah, FDOP did mention that in a long conversation.
Yeah, it's supposed to be somewhere around ninety-seven, ninety-eight, if not bigger than that one, when that tornadoes killed all those people, so you got that coming.
Casey, correct me if I'm wrong. These ditches were playing around, or the ditches that are on our east, right?
The ones that we're talking about are the ditches within, uh, C forty-eight, the ditches within Inglewood subdivision, and the ditches within, uh, Casey, Inglis Acres, Unit One.
Right. The ditch coming off of nineteen that goes through on Butler Road.
That is not in this, not in this scope of work, in much.
Okay.
Now, you know, just keep it in mind that all of this is work that we've identified a problem at, and to change out the culverts and maybe increase the size of them, or add culverts where there is not. This is what this work is, and hopefully moves to move some of this water, this in there out. And that's all this is at this point in time. Good help about engineering? I've watched, when I worked at the city of Willis, a long time ago, that they could, and done engineering in a project, that could take two years. And this is something that the board needs to address today. And our employees have enough skills that to upgrade a culvert on the evening or place culvert where there aren't either. And I think this is a good plan, and I think we're kind of slowly getting away from the meat and the potatoes on here and paying more attention to the pigs. But we really need to address the situation, and just work that in and work our way back. That way, everything, because if it was hitting a congestion between where Drum and Bank is and Butler Road, at least all of that is open, so everything can take a flow back through at that point. But I think you're right on track of doing that. But what we really need to pay attention to is, this project was not budgeted for. That's where we need to have the discussion on at this point in time, as to where we're gonna have to locate the money, where you may have some stuff in there that could be put on hold throughout the course of this budget year, and take some of those dollars from there. And that's a good thing, a good conversation that you and Alice and Will will need to have in this committee, to see where, where we can work this money in there, and at least get started on what it is that we can or can't do, pending the outcome of this grade all. And, and I think that y'all got a good handle on, on doing this, and I believe by the next board meeting, y'all will have a, have identified some dollar amounts you'll probably use to get started, at least to open it up, because usually starting in January, we do get some periodic rains, and we all know, we don't get no little set-in summer showers anymore, where it rains a half an inch for twenty-four hours. It all comes in buckets, you get five to six inches an hour. And no drainage is set up to where it takes a certain amount of flow on the twenty-four hour period, that's how engineered it works. And the culverts that were probably there in certain places were probably engineered properly at that time. But since then, you've got different driveways and everything else that just came in, and roads, and, and properties, and fences, and things like that, that hold water back now. So if we can clean out what we have that we can control, I think that's gonna solve a lot of the problem.
Ms. Mayor from Inglewood, is she here?
Yes, I am.
Mayor? Ma'am, on your work, on the work order, we got town of Inglewood, we've got seven thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars for, one thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars of labor. The labor, I can see, we're gonna be there working anyway, with a problem. How much are y'all gonna be able to help with the park, should be in town of Inglewood?
Uh, I can't speak for the board, but I know that we do have some, uh, money in contingency that can probably be allocated for that. The board would have to vote on that expenditure, but I don't see that as a major hurdle at all.
Okay, that's seven thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars?
Right, right.
Okay, I can see, I can see, we're already gonna be there doing the work, the labor, but I can see by Inglewood, they have, uh, come up with the park.
And I, I don't, again, I don't see that as a problem, because we have set money aside in contingency for stuff like this that happens, so.
Well, let's, we need to put some, uh, fire and feed the people in state, 'cause they pretty much assured me that- Well, that wouldn't go be an issue to, for them to come down and do, if we identified the areas we need some help with. Uh, now, they're kind of backing, backing up on that a little bit, but, um, you know, some phone calls can be made, I think we can, we can get that back, um, get that back rolling in the right direction.
Mr. Chairman, just to let you know, Casey and them have been looking at some numbers for some used grade alls and stuff like that, and, and one of them that they found through a company, there is in a price range that we may be able to afford. If all else fails due to not knowing what weather conditions be and everything else, you know, they may be coming back with a different recommendation rather than a rental agreement. And we're going to be looking at that to see what the best ideas, and Alice can add to that.
We, we have till December thirty-first.
To respond to the quote that we were given, so. We're just, we're looking at that option.
Thirty thousand, buy it.
So we can rent one for twenty-five, or we can buy one for thirty.
I guess kind of a mud rain.
Yeah. But again, we've identified the funding source for, we should have some money and equipment.
I have, I have some money and equipment, yes.
Now, honestly, we need to identify what kind of condition this grade all is in, and it's something that, uh, probably need to, you know, involve Charlie Desper in. I don't know, so, uh, you know, before we, you know, kind of jump the gun on, uh, how much that sounds like.
I, I agree, I'm good.
And he's willing to meet with me and talk to him too, several times.
Our grade all, I've run a group, if I'm not mistaken, having to rent stuff, my, have my stuff clear. Ninety percent are you mining, it's somebody covered by your own- Ninety percent are you making, it's gonna be covered by your rental company. Correct?
Yeah. I mean, it's just, you know, you know, that's definitely other options, you know, to explore. We we have so many that we need to, uh, still explore right now, so.
Well, it's something that could be used in other places besides just there.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
If it was, you know, if it was purchased.
It was assets.
Yeah, if it was a benefit to buy it there, it could be used in another part of the county.
All locations on three forty-nine? Could be used, we could use.
Hey, my suggestion is y'all, when y'all go look, get a piece big enough to do jobs.
Yes, sir.
So we don't have to go get something coming. You get something not big enough to do it, then we got to go somewhere else to get it, bring it in. Talk a little more, just get something big enough to do it right the first time. So we ain't got to do it over.
Right. Terry?
Well, the uh, when I originally did my story, the the neighbor, the the, the people who were the victims of the flooding were not engineers, but they said a lot of this water is coming from under US nineteen. It comes through Gulf East State Forest under US nineteen. And then it rushes down. So has anybody approached the state about that being a problem and asking them for money? You did, you did it?
It's one of the first places I went. And they informed me that I wasn't an engineer also.
You went to the DOT or?
I spoke to a, to a gentleman at DOT, yes, sir. And that, that that wasn't an issue. That their issue, the the issues we were having wasn't their issue. But as a caveat, that's what got us the talks going on, the grade all and the and the help. Um, you know, because obviously there is an issue. But, you know, getting the state to admit to the things of that nature are are tough.
And we would support this, provide a plan to do to asking them to please look at that. And business.
But the question is, what would we, what would we ask DOT to fix on the Gulf East State Forest where it naturally drains and drains from the east through the west? So it's draining properly. The bad thing about it is that you don't get no simple rains anymore. It all comes in buckets.
But if there's something to do with their
I mean, if you back it, you ask them to, to shore theirs up and back it up so it doesn't flow through here as fast now you create, it's probably only on the east side.
I agree. But if there's something they look at with their series of state maintained ditches, which there's a lot of down there, that maybe they can divert some of this water away from the populated areas into like Gulf East.
Well, that's what that particular ditch does. Is what I I think we're, we're, we're looking at this in two different directions. The neighborhood up there is going one way. The ditch that comes from nineteen is going a different way.
Correct.
The ditch that comes from nineteen that goes by this way and outside the back, it doesn't come out there in our right ways. It's the mosquito ditch that was dug in nineteen twenty-six. It runs through by called Howie.
Yeah. But there's a box culvert out there on the highway.
On the highway and then it goes under Butler Road and those culverts there are, are the, the problem on Butler Road necessarily. That's what, I mean, it's, 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 it's two different. They will see what we're dealing with.
Per se.
Dealing with the state on that issue is one thing, but the other side is, it's a whole.
Still something we're gonna have to address.
Without a map?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, Miss Willis?
We did uh talk to DOT uh about it and they did some research on it and met with us and everything. And their, their answer was the ditches that come off of nineteen that that are for those box culverts that go back up into the woods that just dropped dead end into the woods. The only thing they could do to help us was to extend those by about a four hundred feet, which was kind of a joke to us because that had, that had, that's not helping us. But our, our biggest point was, and I think that's what Terry was getting to, they're putting the water on us and it's not your guys' fault. And it's not our fault that the water's being put on us, but I think a fire needs, like you said, a fire needs to be put under them because they did put the water on us. They didn't have a plan of where that water was gonna go in those six culverts in a half a mile area. They had no plan of where that water was gonna go. So somebody needs to put a fire under somebody at state DOT to make them step up to the plate and help fund this project. Because they, uh, they didn't create it, you know, as, as Mother Nature created it, but they had no plan. If those culverts could hold all that water, they had no plan of where all that water was gonna go. And it just so happens it finds that little mosquito ditch by my place, because that's the path of least resistance until it fills up and then it can spread out through the neighborhood. And of course, you guys all know that. And Casey, Casey just got thrown into a hornet's nest and yesterday and he didn't, he was just going by the paperwork that he had and they were showing the paperwork to show it start at Butler Road. Well, we don't, we don't, as citizens, don't want them to start at Butler Road. I'm gonna flood again. I've accepted that. I'm gonna flood again and I'm gonna flood probably many a times to the project, problems fixed. But I wouldn't be okay with them fixing my problem and sending the water to Yankee Town so that they can have my problem. I wouldn't be okay with that. Cause you.
Commissioner?
Thank you, ma'am.
The paperwork was just prepared, you know, they just took cost and it just happened to be fall first. Uh, I I think the biggest thing that we need is direction. Do you want us to go ahead and start at Inglewood in the end of forty and go to fixing those problems because we've already got those culverts priced out? We know what the bid prices are for them and we can just start with that work in areas that we've got the equipment and the men to do and.
I may be speaking out of turn here, but I believe what the, what the intent from Commissioner Stevens was was before we start any work, we need to identify a funding source. So if we're gonna give that in the form of a motion or we can do that with consensus, that we need to work towards a funding source. Bottom line is, uh, you know, I don't, I mean, we're, we're what, the eighth of December? Uh, we got the Christmas holiday coming, we got New Year's coming, so that week's lost. Um, we have, uh, you know, a lot of people who are trying to burn up some manual leave. I mean, I I don't, I I know we need to get to work sooner rather than later and I'm a huge proponent of that because we do have a rainy season coming. But I think before we start talking about work and getting work done, we need to identify a funding source. And I I think that Commissioner Rooks is a good idea and maybe we could write this in to, to pen a letter to the state DOT and ask them to do everything they're doing, but um, you know, maybe again, uh, you know, addressing this situation. Um, and don't even ask me what the language needs to say. Maybe work with our road department, even on that, but um, maybe, you know, maybe we get some help, but uh, but do we do that in the form of a motion or can we do that with consensus?
I can tell you all, I went, went down there, three quarters of the day and met with people. We walked all over, whoever on the way. Get ninety-six thousand dollars, not gonna be enough, no word. But that's what I looked at when I was with y'all. Uh, and I told the people, well, I wasn't down there and I'll say it again right here. Levy County, let's forget the state, the federal help. Levy County can't afford it, it's on their own. We have got to get some help from somebody. And there's some, there's some out there somewhere, we got to find them. Um, I agree with Commissioner Mick and Commissioner Stevens. We need to find the money before we start proposing wherever we start and when to start.
And I think they have the abilities to look and see where in their budget and y'all can take money from and convert it to this project in that next board meeting. Have a dollar amount allocated and and start it out as to whether it's in different phases, what you think we need to get done and break it out that way and to make the dollar amount.
That's, y'all are speaking the same thing. If, if starting up at, you know, if the little subdivision up on the east end is gonna, is gonna drain, Inglewood is gonna drain over the forty, you know, what would the cost be on just that part? Not including everything going down the right ways on forty-eight, just this part. You gotta, and then see what our dollar amount is to know if we start, can we start that and complete that?
But no good, we're not gonna start it after January gets here, we post all vacation.
Well, that's, that's definitely a given.
And how much grade all work needs to be done on that part? You know, as far as, is, is the Inglewood subdivision, can you do all the culverts in there or just back there? Or do you need the grade all to start that part? If we don't have to have a grade all to do that part to get it out to forty, you know. This is y'all, you know.
Right, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
But we can get them all over there.
And I think, from what I've seen, even with the Inglewood deal, um, that work can be done whenever it's raining. I mean, it's, you know, that work comes and goes pretty quickly and it's accessible. Because whenever you get over on, on the Butler roadside, um, that, that it would be a nightmare to try to do whatever the water's five foot deep for six to.
Right.
Mr. Grant?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, is this something that could be handled better in a workshop?
Actually, I think we're handling it pretty good right now, Mr. Grant. I think they, they, they got the direction that I, that I believe they, that they need to go in and that this board needs to go in and have something laid out for the next board meeting so we can move forward and get all our ducks in a row and any materials that we needed that we don't already have, get them ordered so we can have everything ready by, by the first of the year.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to uh, to pen a letter to DOT and to for Casey and the.
You can have a motion, I'll second.
All right, well, that's a motion on the letter. We can get that out of the way. Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, uh, we probably need, uh, we need a formal direction on seeking out funding source.
Do a motion on that, making that what it is that we got here.
Okay. So, I mean, we're kinda, we're kinda going in a circle here. Yes, sir. So that's why I'm waiting to read on this. Casey, the direction is work. Wilbur and Alice and whoever else you gotta get involved. See if we can find some money and get this party started.
Yes, sir.
All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Thank you all for working, Miss Alice. All right, Wilbur.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Tourist Development, Mr. Chairman Queen, welcome back. Don't sign over your fantasy case by the issue.
Well, as you remember, um, Casey's very tall. Um, back in September, um, I came to and asked for permission to um seek an application for a grant through the Conservation Fund for a seed um grant program for the Big Bend area. And I made that application and we were awarded that maximum amount. I went for it, it was twenty thousand dollars is what their maximum amount. And what this is, as the Conservation Fund has sent the agreement, um, it has been um brought up to um legal standards with um our MS Browns has looked at it and and changed number eleven um to, so that it, it meets the Florida statute provisions for the county. And um, it's, um, let me just read this a little bit so that the public will know what this is. Um, Leedy County Visitors Bureau made application to the conservation program. And um, this is for a shellfish trail map, which will include clams, oysters, pink shrimp, recreational scallop harvesting, blue crab and stone crabs for the coastal communities of Leedy, Dixie, Taylor and Jefferson Counties within the Big Bend region. In order to win a maximum amount of points and and get approval for it, uh, they wanted us to include the entire coastline that they were concerned with in the Big Bend area. Um, the grant is for twenty thousand, uh, will be, will be made to the Leedy County Board and County Commissioners to fund this project, to develop, produce and distribute the four county Big Bend shellfish trail map, including a digital web, a digital website map and a kickoff advertising campaign as well as connecting aquaculture industries and visitors to restaurants, retail outlets and recreational opportunities. It will promote our local shellfish farmers and fishermen and our local economies along the Big Bend coastlines. It will be the first of its kind in the state of Florida and it will be the largest in the United States. So I'm very excited that we've been, we've won this um grant award to, to go forward. Um, and it will, it has to end. We'll get through all of the production of all of that. I will do all of that. And uh, we'll get it all finished out by uh November of next year. There's two uh grant reporting um processes, uh, one in mid, one at the end of May, um, a midterm report for how you're doing along with the project and then a final report will be in November. And the great part about this that I think is that we have some great um folks that are helping, not necessarily sponsoring, but they're, they're helping to co-op with this. And that's gonna be the University of Florida Institute of Food and Agriculture Services. We're also gonna have the input and help from the Cedar Key Aquaculture Association, who produces clams and oysters in our region. And also the Leedy, of course, the Leedy, Dixie, Taylor and Jefferson County Tourist Development Councils are, are in agreement to help us with this as well. And then we also have the Department of Agriculture through Threshville, Florida, which will also be sponsored on the map and in the production of this, as well as the, the Conservation Fund will have their tagline on there as well, their logo. And we'll have, of course, Leedy County Board and County Commissioners logos with you on there too, as well as the other counties. So it's a real good project, I think, that will help bring visitors to our area, um, to help them know where they can get shellfish retail, where they can go to eat local um grown and produce um shellfish in our region. Um, they do a few of these up in Maine. Uh, they're usually just very small little trails. Uh, which help people know where they can go to buy shellfish. But since we have such a production of shellfish in our region, um, I think it's gonna be a great map and we're very excited about it. So we hope you're tuned in. And this is an agreement between you and the Conservation Fund for the funds to be administered to produce that project.
So Leedy is getting the whole twenty thousand.
Yes.
Dixie, Taylor and Jefferson Counties aren't participating, other than the rest of the counties.
Yes, it will be a, a map that will include those counties and where their local areas are for their retailers and their restaurants and what kinds of products they produce. Because not everybody produces as many as Leedy County. We do blue, blue, uh, blue crab as well as stone crab. It's one of them only do a few of those things. So it'll be a map that'll show you where in that region, in that Big Bend region, you can get those products. And where you can also go to see working waterfronts. We're also gonna be developing photos, photo areas where you can um go to see a working waterfront. And you might not think it's a, a, a big deal to be able to see um a, a stone crabber or, or a clamor, you know, with their boat and their apparatus and all. But in these areas along this region, you can go and actually see that and visitors are interested in that. So it's, as well as a tourist, as well as it is economically. So it's really a good, a good mix.
It'll go a whole way if they take the toll everywhere.
But what they want, you can, uh, but to answer your question, Manny, um, that I will be working with their individual tourist development councils to help me find where those areas are within their region.
And uh, this is uh, just wanna kick off, who said in the year sixteen or seventeen?
It start, it start, as soon as you sign this, I'll get started working on this and then it'll, it really gets started probably in January. But then we'll have from January until November to do the production of that.
Gather the information.
Gather the information and make sure it's accurate. Create the map. And create the digital format so that all of the counties can have that, as well as, you know, we'll also give this to Visit Florida so they can produce it and push it out. You know, so. You know.
Mr. Grant?
Mr. Chairman, this is most of the benefit for Cedar Key, correct?
Well, no, we have two, we have two coastal communities. This will be Yankee Town as well. We have two coastal communities. And anyone in the region, like if anyone in, in, in Cheeplin, that's a, a restaurant that sells local or, you know, sells local produced uh clams or oysters and things like that, they'll be, they'll be on those maps as well.
I was just wondering how it was going to affect the rest of the county, how it was gonna benefit the rest of the county.
Well, hopefully by bringing in people and then people who, who are already here when they get the map and know where they can go to, to get a retail, you know, buy shrimp from or whatever, you can also go. So it's, it's beneficial in that way too. But we do have two, we have several, not as many, but we have, um, still have shrimpers in Yankee Town that dock on Buffalo Beachy. That go out and, and still harvest shrimp.
All right, let's pledge our board.
Since this is a grant, I make a motion to.
I'll second the request.
We have a motion by Commissioner Look, a second by Commissioner Dorn. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I look forward to bringing it back to you and inviting y'all to the kickoff presentation. My office completed. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Glad you're feeling better.
Yep.
Mr. Sheriff, would you please finish your earlier statement for the record on the coin device?
All the world will know.
Well, man, I'm proud this guy's been smart with his money and it's good for him, good for us.
He has always been that way.
Thank you. Okay, now.
Yes, sir.
As I said previously, due to some unfortunate circumstances, the lack of detention officers and the lack of replacement nine-one-one communication officers and a little bit of attrition and a little bit of fuel savings on the law enforcement end, I was able to return to the commission a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents, to be exact, I believe. And again, it is attributed to all of those. As you know, I operate four different budgets. There was no, very little savings in the law enforcement budget, primarily again, the fuel savings. But we did able to save quite a bit from those open positions in dispatch and detention. Getting harder and harder, as I've mentioned during the past year, to hire detention officers because of what's going on statewide with the loss of Department of Corrections officers and they almost get everyone coming out of any academy anymore. So it's been very, very difficult. Likewise, it's been very difficult to get nine-one-one communications officers. We had a vacancy of five out of eighteen positions in dispatch. So you can just imagine what those that were remaining had to go through with overtime and working their days off and all. So however, as we know, the overtime does have benefits associated with it, but it's not like the vacant positions. So we were able to save primarily, basically every penny was from those open positions. Fortunately, we have filled all five of the nine-one-one communication positions. They are, after about six or seven months, totally certified as of last week with their Department of Health certification, their emergency fire and emergency medical certification. So that is excellent. We are hired one new detention officer yesterday and I think the command staff has two additional final interviews today with two prospects. So we're gradually getting all those positions filled. But anyway, I'm glad I'm not going to go out and previously or wastefully spend that money at the end of a year. You have, the commission has allowed us to be able to get back to a point in our budget that we're able to sustain and move forward. So that is a good thing. Don't expect this kind of return this year because the positions are being filled. But that's highly unusual, I know. And it can be both a positive and a negative as far as I'm concerned. But that, we need every dollar that we have, but we're not going to spend it wastefully at the end of a year just because. Because then I got to turn around and I need that money this year for those positions. So it wouldn't make any sense to do that. But anyway, that's where we're at. I would, in conjunction with that, to put a little bit of a negative light on that money. But we are getting close to the day. We're going to have to do something with a nine-one-one communication center. We are packed to the max. We have, we're creating, or have created now a problem, even though our dispatchers were the headsets and the mics, that because we are so packed and so much going on, that transmissions from one dispatcher is being heard over the other one. So there's a lot of background, you know, it's. But we are full of equipment, servers, computers. You know, as we know, we have two radio systems now, with Department of Public Safety radio system and our eight-hundred system for law enforcement. We are just maxed out and I would ask the board, and I know, I think I put this on a capital building list back when they were asked to do that a year or two ago. But I would just ask you to keep that in mind. We're going to obviously make do with what we have, but there is no more room for any further equipment or any kind of expansion. We are just totally maxed out. So I'd ask you to keep it in mind as we move forward in the future as a capital building project, that we're going to need to do something about the nine-one-one dispatch center. Again, not necessarily immediate, but I just want to bring it to your attention. And you know, I know, like in electric county, I was talking to Sheriff Darnell. And when she has money, she was able to save money and turn it back in. They sometimes put part of that into a capital building fund related to sheriff's projects and the things that are needed in sheriff's office. So that'd be something we might want to consider when you go forward. That's kind of the state of where we're at right now. We appreciate all the support. We need detention officers, we know many good ones that are graduating academies or need jobs, send them our way. But we should hopefully have a couple of those filled by the end of the year. I thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Yeah, I got one here. On you nine-one-one communication system, which you suppose will work better for you? Expanding what we have or finding a new build?
Honestly, don't think we can expand where we're at right now, what we got. We need to stay on location.
Yeah.
With that, because they also serve as the after-hours walk-in. You know, people walk in at midnight into the secure dispatch area. So we still have to have that public contact twenty-four seven for them. So to move it offsite would not be a good thing. I don't think, I mean, you know the building. That building is, you know, on the outskirts. We have investigators officers, we have nine-one-one addressing. And part of that, we have all the computer rooms. I don't think you can do any more. And that has been remodeled several times over the years. So I don't think there's much more you can do there. Equipment-wise, we should be fairly good. Most of the equipment is fairly new and in good shape. So you're not going to have any equipment, much of any equipment. You're going to have obviously moving costs that are going to have to be done by professionals. But it's strictly building-related. But I honestly don't know how we could do much more with that building. But it's just something I wanted to bring up and make you aware of.
Where we tore down the old drug task force building, the old mobile home. Would that be a suitable location, you think? Or is that too far off the beaten path?
Uh, it's going to be a security problem for the jail, I believe, up there.
Well.
I don't know, I know where.
Okay.
I don't know exactly where it would go there.
Do, uh, do you have any idea how much? Have you done any research on how much a building's going to cost for expansion?
No. I think you're going to have as much in probably professional moving costs and electronics and all that you are on what's going to be built. But it's.
I don't know the financial side of this, but I, you know, this is your money. You did a good job saving it and I appreciate it. Like you stated earlier, you could have moved it a line item at the end of the budget year and spent it on whatever you want to. Also considering that there was considerable savings because we were shorthanded on dispatchers. That's where portions kind of came from. And so my belief that we ought to, whatever we do with this money, we need to earmark it as your money and move forward with a nine-one-one building. If it takes three years or five years to accrue the money, so be it. But at least we have this much money as a seed to start out. And I don't know how we do that legally and financially, but I'm assuming this money is going to go back into general fund and there it could get lost. And I think if we market somehow, your market is a capital building project.
And I know there are many other, many other needs, you know, and places for it to go throughout the county. But even if it's just a portion, just that we start kind of a fund there for that place. Whether it be all of it or any part of it elsewhere, I mean, that's your choices and that's your decisions. But I just want to make you aware and I think it would be good, you know, to start putting at least part of that back. And like I say, this is really an unusual, it's never happened in my career where we returned this kind of money. And I've been around a while and in positions that I know what I'm talking about there. I think we only returned seventeen or twenty-one thousand last year, you know. So this is a huge amount. But even if you could put part of it back, if you didn't need it all somewhere else, we could start at least building or, you know, solving that problem. It is, it's already there, but we, you know, we're going to deal with it.
Sheriff, I want my suggestion, same with basically, use your money to start with. My suggestion, you start trying to find out where are we going to put it? What we need to put it at, what it's going to cost? Pay that money and put it in the sheriff's box somewhere to start saving. Give me some more back next year. Maybe by that time we can, we can, we do what you go. Or you bring up a suggestion where you want to put it or. I don't know how that building is, it's loose, put it out there, immediate time. It's got, something's got to be done, we know.
The rest of us, we're just moving the detention sites, I'm just saying that.
I'm trying to say I've been for one incident.
That's real, that's true. That's not a joke, right one?
I'd rather.
Undercover, let me say undercover, he's.
I'd rather see you move your investigation out into another building and expand the whole communication and legal works at. All your investigators into another building for privacy and security purposes.
That might be possible.
That, that, that would be my suggestion. I want to make sure I'm on the chair.
And the other part, you've got to have the nine-one-one addressing part there available for the public with easy access to because it's not near as much of that now. But there is, you know, the public has to have access to that and they're there at the entrance.
Do we need that for the motion? Put this money away from the sheriff. Mr. Clerk? I make a motion to hear Non-Gentleman. Motion here, Non-Gentleman, do I hear a second?
Aye.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, with the conversation that went on about setting up a special fund with the sheriff returning his funds and you said it was a hundred and seventy-eight.
Six hundred and seventy-eight, six eighty-seven.
With that dollar amount being said, instruct, I'll make a motion to instruct the clerk of reports to the board to separate that dollar amount and set aside a special fund for the sheriff and any other dollars that he may have to return in this budget year. Set it there and continue on until the sheriff has come up with an idea as to how he needs to, uh, separate and expand the communication center.
I'll second.
We may need to check with Sheila to see if she included any of the expected returns from the sheriff's funds in this budget.
Well, I'm sure she did. I'm sure she did that as expected revenues. And so if we do that, then we can all, then at some point during the year, then we'll have to do a budget amendment, which we always do every year anyway. Yeah, I guess.
I think it's a good point because Sheila had, you know, that money would return on October thirtieth or thirty-first. So she's had it a month, so she may have already allocated elsewhere.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Stevens. We did have a second by Commissioner Dorn, correct?
Yeah.
And obviously, if it's something we can't do, we can't do it. But I think it's very commendable and it needs to be done. I mean, it's obviously a cost that's on our horizon. So we might as well use this money wisely while we have it. Rather than have to figure out where to get it from later. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mayor Merritt? Do you have anything you'd like to say? Welcome, glad to see you. Anything, Mayor Weiss?
I love this time.
Okay.
I'm honored to be in here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lippman?
Yes. I was going to do this during Commissioner Stevens' report, but I can do it now. On January the twenty-eighth, from nine AM until twelve noon, the city of Williston is hosting Joel Chandler. Many of you may remember Mr. Chandler. He's had, he's got something of a reputation in the state of Florida for public records requests and, shall we say, keeping governments on the straight and narrow with public record requests. There are those that would think that Mr. Chandler is the devil himself. We have actually found him to be extremely informative and very open. We hosted him once before. We are hosting him again and we are extending an invitation to any jurisdiction in Levy County that would like to attend. Please feel free to send your city clerk, your department heads, whoever you want to send to hear what Mr. Chandler has to say, to participate in the session. He is extremely well-versed in public records law and he is more than willing to share his experiences and his insights. And I know from our standpoint, it has made us better in the city of Williston at handling public records requests correctly than we were before. And that invitation's also extended to the county. If the clerk's office or anybody else would care to send representatives, you're more than welcome. As we get a little closer, we'll put something out to everybody to try and get a head count. And then we will also, that will also drive where the event is held.
You know what day of week that is?
I do not off the top of my head, no.
Thursday.
A Thursday. Thank you.
All right. Public comments, we reach for a second, public comment section. Mr. Grant?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. At this time, I would like the board to acknowledge and commend John McDonald for the work he's done on emergency communication in case of a disaster. He has set up where the ham, there's about fifteen or thirty, fifteen or twenty ham operators here in the county. To make a long story short, my daughter and I went to Ocala yesterday. Three miles into Levy, or into Marion County, I had a five-watt handheld and I hit the repeater from there. You can hit the repeater from anywhere in the county with a five-watt handheld with the exception of deep southeast portion. And he and Aaron Mills have done one heck of a job on it.
John, if you'd like to elaborate anymore?
I'm glad it worked.
We have, we have about, like I say, about fifteen or twenty ham operators that are extremely interested in this. And I'm going to talk to John later about getting Dan Noah to come up and give the ham operators a course in weather watching. But I'd like just to let you know that what a fine job he's doing out there.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. It's always good to hear a positive. It's always good to hear a positive report.
Thank you, John.
Give me a raise. Anybody else for public comments this morning? All right, moving on. It's coming up in Commissioner's voice.
Mr. Chu, this isn't during public comments, but it's a related item from earlier, um. I wanted to know whether the board wanted Mr. Freddie and I to work with the sheriff to look into law enforcement options regarding Mr. Nichols. The board was interested in us pursuing.
Do you want?
As well, looking into some law enforcement options?
Yes, ma'am.
Seeing whether.
Are you asking how we should ask them to look into?
Just wanted to know if the board wants us to do that.
Go for it.
Do I have to say John's?
If you bond out, just like anybody up here.
Say my tone on that one? Give me the cash on that. Yeah. Commissioner reports, uh, we need to, uh, been informed, we need to appoint a chairman and a vice chairman for the county year two thousand fifteen dash sixteen.
I'll make a recommendation that we leave Commissioner Meeks as chairman. We've got many, many projects going on and I think he's doing a great job and I'd like to see him stay there.
I'll make that a second, I'll also, if you let me, I'll add on your motion.
Go right there.
Yeah, everybody just sent it. Hold on. Well, thank you, uh, for your nomination, I am honored. I, I don't know what I can say about that, but, uh, I appreciate y'all trusting you to, uh, drive the, the vote for one more year at least, so. All in favor of the motion, please sit if I'm by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Everybody's. All right, uh, we're gonna go a little bit out of order, um. Uh, I wanna get this one item of business out of the way, uh, and then we'll go back into our commissioner reports. As you can see, the item here is adopt resolution twenty fifteen dash sixty-two withdrawing membership at North Florida Broadband Authority. And we're sending prior resolutions, two thousand nine dash forty-one, two thousand ten dash seventy-one, and two thousand thirteen dash ten related to such authority. To give you a little bit of a background, uh, over the weekend, a couple of weekends ago, there was a newspaper article published in the, uh, Angel Sun that I found to be very disheartening, um, in, in, in the fact that it stated the federal government was seeking other alternatives to provide internet access to the rural areas. And none of those were broadband. I'm, I'm kinda hardworking on that because there's, they've already made a huge investment, thirty million dollars into this broadband authority in this local area. But, um, for whatever reason, they are now seeking to do things via hardwire with companies such as Windstream and AT&amp;T, and I believe Singular, uh, in this region. So their considerable investment leads me to believe that they feel that broadband is a dead issue. Combined with the fact that, uh, we are no longer receiving service from the Broad, Broadband Authority. Mike Johns from SBIC, who provides our internet service at transit and emergency management. And Sheriff's Office, uh, does not, is no longer doing business with him, he has secured his own internet bandwidth. We are no longer a customer, so thus, there is no reason for us to stay, uh, stay involved. And then finally, um, in the last few weeks, uh, well, it's, it's been almost a year since we've had a meeting of any sort. Um, it is, is painfully obvious to me that, uh, extended elite technologies who we entered into an agreement with to, uh, negotiate taking over the assets and running the network, uh, have, have not been, uh, very active in their pursuit and or their negotiation with the broadband. Uh, I think that's a dead deal. I think the time is, is come for Levy County to, uh, disassociate itself with the North Florida Broadband Authority, affect you, uh, immediately. I, I'm very sad to say that this is, is my conclusion. Uh, I believe in the broadband, I believe in, in the good faith that's put forth with it. Now whether or not it was a, a perfect plan, uh, some people may, may dispute that, um, but it was a, an attempt and it was a, a good faith attempt by all the member counties and communities to try to provide for the citizens who were underserved and unserved. And, and, and that, that part of government is commendable. Now, the way the money was spent and where the money utilized, that's up for debate. So I'll be perfectly honest to begin that. I came into the broadband deal, uh, pretty much at the end. So I, I was there for most of the bad times, not many of the good times, but. Yes, ma'am. So with that being said, um, that's, that's what I'm asking for this morning, so if there's any questions and comments, Stu, uh, my friend Stu Willock is here. Stu is, uh, from the Columbia County Observer, he has followed the broadband since, uh, I've been there. And, uh, he's always, um, had some insight, so. If you'd like to address the board.
It's a pleasure being in swing, I take away my report I had to put on my citizen hat. Uh, and following this broadband thing, says just about the beginning. And I would say right at the get-go, your commissioners have been forced way behind it, all in crap, went all over north central Florida, trying to get rural counties broadband. She was like a one-man army, she showed up these days, she didn't give a hell. Unfortunately, she was not successful. The broadband initiative started right after the country went into the big recession. And Obama, Obama administration was pouring money here, there, and everywhere. And a group of folks from Tallahassee, sort of like the Tallahassee mafia that we've all heard about, got together in Tallahassee and decided to apply at the twelfth hour for stimulus funds, which was done actually through the headquarters at FSU. It turned out that this area of Florida got thirty million dollars to build a broadband, a rural broadband network, that was fourteen counties in north central Florida. Central Florida, which was fair enough, the Florida Rural, Rural Broadband Alliance also received federal stimulus money to the tune of twenty-four million dollars. Between that fifty-four million dollars, there's not one connection, that they spent all the money. Additionally, and this is your federal government, through the USDA, I can't wait to tell you these numbers. Main Street Broadband, which went bankrupt, went through approximately thirty-four million dollars. So in this area, to get rural broadband to the counties, the rural counties, to the folks that needed it the most and had the least chance to get it, they spent eighty-eight million dollars, and there's no connection. As a matter of fact, they don't even know where the money is. Going back to two thousand eleven, I just, while I'm here, I run along with a picture of, we used to call him Cowboy, Levy's County's Chair Johnson, showed up in a meeting in Marion in two thousand eleven. And told the folks, at that time it was, the broadband authority was being represented by GSG and after that Tallahassee, NGN, a law firm some of you may be familiar with, and various accounting firms. Chair Johnson told the board at that time, it would be a travesty to this area if the project isn't completed. It changes the economic landscape, it gives us a living, level planning field, it gives us fast, reliable internet service. I don't like stuff being forced upon me, I am not interested in being told someone has to fall on the sword for the benefit of this project. I'm here to fix it, let's figure out how to fix it and how to move forward. And let's go get what we said had to get done, done. That was Chair Johnson, your commissioner. Been cool, you know, you're the movie guy, you do that, yeah, but you don't have, you never read the article. So at the end of the meeting, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson said he was not gonna give up and that he was gonna continue with this as long as he could. Then Mr. Meeks came in, Mr. Meeks certainly gave it the college try. Went to the meetings, some of the stuff, uh, was totally out of his control. Couldn't get reports from attorneys, you couldn't get reports from the county, you couldn't get reports from anybody. He couldn't get them, I couldn't get them, they just weren't giving them out. At that time, there was still a chance that there may have been broadband. When they shut down the broadband authority in two thousand and twelve, and I'm wrapping this up in a second, they had some gal that was working for a local firm in Tallahassee, it's not important what her name, she was a professional grants person for the US government. And she moved from Alaska to Florida, I love, I don't know how that worked out. But she was really interested in getting broadband to the rural residents, your residents, your children, in the rural areas. And when the government decided to shut this down, she was down in the parking lot with tears, running down her face. Smart gal, really smart, saying, you know, the saddest thing about this is that if they shut this down, the people that need it the most aren't gonna get it. And that's usually how it is with your children. Well, they didn't get it. They didn't get it because they blew through thirty million dollars. When they shut it down, they had a forensic accountant working for the Department of Commerce. This part of the grant was run through the NTIA, which is the Department of Commerce. And to tell you right now, who's in charge of Department of Commerce, that's United States Senator Bill Nelson. The bitch called his office. I spoke to his office, I was told, well, we might get back to you and maybe we won't get back to you. I explained to his gal in the area, listen, you know, these folks, they, thirty million dollars went away. The forensic audit is report, when they shut this down the first time, I know this is gonna be hard to believe because, you know, government, the United States government, that report disappeared, they don't know what happened to it. Don't know what happened to it. So the federal government, your federal government, where you guys can't find ten cents for a roll, they had millions and millions of dollars disappeared and the report disappeared along with it. At the same time that report disappeared, there was attorneys flying in from Washington, they were making five thousand dollars a day, he's in an airplane, reading stuff. She said she was reading stuff about the broadband authority, but nobody really knows what she was reading. She was reading the future debt of the United States, is what she was reading. So, nobody won, except in this project, the lawyers, the accountants, and the auditors and the printing presses. The people that needed it the most, we were getting, especially your children. What I would suggest is this, if this is, I wanna follow up, you got it at the right time, according to the inter-local agreement that was drawn up by NGN, the last three counties, the last three members of the North Florida Broadband Authority are the ones that may be responsible for any debts incurred by the authority. Besides the millions and millions of dollars that were spent on wiggle fees and accounting fees and consulting fees and, they had one guy from FSU getting ten thousand dollars a month and falsified reports, he was court falsifying reports. All means shaking their head, yes. And, uh, they didn't do anything. He threatened to resign, but then had an epiphany and decided that ten thousand dollars a month was better than not having ten thousand dollars a month. So he decided not to resign. I would suggest the right to Ted Oho, who I spoke to him and his staff, congressman. He got interested in this and he said, like everything that goes on in America now, we don't wanna, we don't wanna remember the past, we're just gonna go forward. I suggest the right to Senator Bill Nelson. You know, he's a politician. Uh, and he asked him, I was blown off and said, well, maybe he'll get back to you, maybe won't. Uh, and if anybody's interested, I'll give them the name of this gal that takes care of North Central Florida. And I will be getting back to him to see if he's got any kind of comment, and ask him to investigate what happened to all this money. And this thirty million dollars spent is not one connection. But I just want you to know that your commissioners and I might endorse anybody here, but they worked hard to get rural broadband, all in crap, worked hard to see that that money was spent right and that rural broadband to you and your children in Levy County. And they did the best job that they could, and that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready for a motion?
I think so.
I'm making a motion, let me follow. Sheriff Meeks' recommendation to pull out broadband.
Thank you.
Anybody can throw away that much money, we'll be, we don't follow.
Now, motion, I hear a second. I have a second by Commissioner Meeks, Dr. Meeks, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please sit if I'm by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Commissioner Carries. We're in on the broadband business. Mr. Jordan, Commissioner Reports.
I think Danny, they, they've been on such a long job, God, they didn't do that. I would like, with everything going on in English, there's more problems covered. Mr. Frey, I would like, by next meeting, we expect the twenty-second, if you would come to this board with a recommendation of someone to fill Bruce Greenlee's position. If we mess around, Dr. I feel unless you're going to get too far behind me, you ain't going to be able to catch up. So I would like you to come to the board in the twenty-second with a recommendation to take that position.
Do we have consensus to make a motion?
Yes, consensus. It's usually not something the board directs in certain time, right? I believe Mr. Frey's been held out.
I believe a consensus is important.
You know, the intent has already been put out there, but don't just say this. Bruce is leaving, it is, has created a difficult spot. But I also believe that, that we have personnel out there that is able to work together, molder, make something happen that could work positive. You know, keeping in mind with the dollar amounts that we have here on, on the best guess was over a hundred and six thousand dollars. If you don't build that position immediately, you can take that dollar amount that's left for that salary and earmark that to help pay for this project and keep having a come from other sources to pay for it. It was January or February of this year that Mr. Booney, Mr. Reese, Bruce, and myself sat down to talk about revenues coming into that department because they were just absolutely not meeting expectations. And it ended up at the end of that fiscal year, was way below And I would just advise against making a knee-jerk reaction to build a position at this point in time because I do believe that we would take the dollars that would earmark that salary and benefit package and plug them in and then pay for that. And once we get through that, then yes, at some point in time, if we need to fill that position, after that, then, then yes, I would probably agree. But right now, we don't have money that's dedicated to fill that. We're going to have to scramble to find that. Plus, we also have the boy that docked street too, that is unsustainable. I just would be very hard to build a position knowing that we've got some money in order to pay for some issues that we've got after on the table at this time. Now that's just not going to happen.
I agree with you on that. We don't have to rush into anything at this time. And before, we only had one supervisor, Wilbur over the road front. I just can't remember why we chose to go and have two. I can't remember. But I'd like to let Wilbur look at it and make a recommendation back to the board whether we need to have two supervisors. Because that's just my opinion. That's just my opinion.
What the situation is out there as we speak, if anyone needs to know, we have a road construction superintendent and an assistant. But in Bruce's former office, we had one that had been doing administrative duties back to Justin Watson and then she brought Bruce on board after Justin left to go to Gilchrist County. We also have Casey and we have Wilbur assigned right now to kind of oversee the administrative side out there and to work with the construction side because of these strict limitations on budget that we have. One thing, when Bruce did leave, again, it's just like in the Shanky Town and it's like the Cedar Key Dock Street. Bruce leaving was not budgeted for. And when I say that, it was a pretty good payout. And we've got to overcome that too. So I just want you to remember, there's some unbudgeted things that's going on with the road department. And yes, the gas taxes are not what they were. And, but I'll leave that up to the board. But right now, we do have it where Wilbur is overseeing it. Wilbur's a former county commissioner that has great budget expertise and he's working with them. And that's what we had at this moment. But I'll do whatever the board wishes. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I think the question's always been, do we want to go out and advertise for that position? Do we not? Do we want to promote from within?
I would say promote from within.
But as, as long as I can remember though, Ms. Lily, there's been a two-handed operation out there from Skip Hamel to Mr. Earl to Grinnell and to, you know, right on back. For whatever reason, I don't know. But that's pretty much. Now, I think for a short period there, when Justin left, we did have one that was promoted Bruce up there. But I could be wrong there. But I mean, as far as I know, we've always had two. Now, is that good or bad? There's been times when, you know, people didn't know which one to go to. So yeah, there's, there is a, you know, there's that need sometimes for just one head as opposed to two. But yeah, it's been.
Yeah, I think it goes back to when Mr. Earl took over from Grinnell. He agreed to take the construction side, but he didn't want to go down with the administrative side. And then Mr. Skip got promoted to the administrative head. And I think that's where we've been ever since.
And that was before my time.
That's, that's the way, I'm going to research.
After Skip, if that broke down.
But that's, that's the operation as we.
And then you have two over the, over the road department itself.
Same ways.
I don't, myself personally, as far as, I mean, I thought Freddie was going to hire for it outside of board decisions. I thought I was just standing for him, hiring that person who he deemed fit. But preferably, I would say from within, that would happen.
Well, in John McDonald's case, you know, we had an assistant there. Here, we don't have an assistant. But in John's case, I just brought that to the board for the board to approve or whatever. It's been done different ways, Commissioner. Sometimes the board wants to select a department head. Sometimes that's left under the board office.
Well, and in John's case, the board has to approve that as the Department of Emergency and Security requires it.
I agree with Rock and he was there, but you need to become with him. It's going to have to deal with outside. But I would think we need some, get somebody on board because we've got so much thrown off from this project. We need one man and we need the answer to it. And my opinion is, we will hire Wilbur to give Mr. Freddie hands because he's the floor.
Freddie, I think he's doing a good job.
Exactly. I mean, I know exactly what he's, but that's my, that's my opinion. We'll, I'll take what you want with it.
I don't, I think that the deciding by the twenty-fourth is a little hasty. I think we've got some good people in place that can, can see it, oversee it at least until the first of the year and then give us all some time to think about what, what we want to do as far as hiring, promoting, hiring, whatever we want to do. Or, or maybe even on Commissioner Stevens' idea of not doing anything with it at this moment. That's just my opinion. We've got some good people there. We've got some good people within the county system that want, that are interested in the position. I'm going to state earlier in this meeting that we did think that a whole lot was going to happen in the next two weeks, three weeks, somewhere due to the holidays. So I'm going to kind of aside, but let's, let's not make a decision by the twenty-fourth. Let's not put Freddie in that position to do that. So. I guess that gives us a consensus for now.
I think so. Do you have consensus?
I just think it's, I mean, I think it's too quick to make that decision. I mean, especially fully in your lap, a day.
Well, it was a good point made, even from the sheriff who was gone. And I hate to say good things about him, but just like he said, he had, he had some vacancies for some time and he, he did realize some savings out of that. And so right now, that may be a little bit of in our favor kind of thing.
And that was a good point that brought up that we did have a payout with Bruce.
But at the same, at the same time now, and I've got to research it. No, but at the same time, I've got to research this a little bit because we do have union obligations and we don't want anybody working out of classification out there. And that, that really is a concern because that could happen and then you have to go back and start trying to figure out some kind of a pay system. We didn't appoint anybody as general. We can definitely do that if we need to. That's kind of what Wilbur's doing anyhow. So, but if we have to, then that's what we'll do.
I understand.
But he is out there as a decision maker right now to oversee things that has to come up on a daily basis. And so that's, that's, that is something that would have to be looked at, you know, because Casey is not called the assistant road superintendent. Alice isn't either. Alice is office manager. Casey is, it's something else. I don't have it right in front of me what his actual classification is.
Hard worker.
Yes, jack of all trades and all of that. And everybody, everybody is like that and they do not make anything about working out of classification. But it can become an issue because they are union eligible. They're not in the union, but they are union eligible, which makes that, you know, a situation look bad.
If we hire within, you're still going to be saving up that money, right?
Well, if you hire from within and you fill the position where that person comes from, yes. But for right now, we did have that payout because he had quite a bit of unused vacation time, annual leave, free time. So it ended up.
Ms. Tony, do you want to?
Oh, yes. Actually, there's two things that I'd like to say. The Levy County Historical Society has purchased the caboose that is sitting on County Route three twenty-six on the way to the Waukesashee Boatman. Come the first of the year, the locomotive will be moved out to, for those of you who are familiar, where the WildHog Canoe Race ends on the Waukesashee at nineteen and ninety-eight. And so come in April, we have the WildHog Canoe Race and we'll have an unveiling of the new locomotive, or the caboose. And we'd like to make it a Levy County Welcome Center. The second thing is, this Saturday, the twelfth, the Historical Society will be sponsoring a Florida Authors and Writers Festival at the Cedar Key RV Resort in Sumner on Shiloh Road. We will have authors from all over Florida. They're coming from Jacksonville, Tallahassee, Gainesville. We have some locals that I didn't know about. I'm wondering how many other people did, but after Saturday, we'll have, we'll introduce them. So please come out. We'll be there from nine to four on Saturday and you can browse and talk to them and have them sign your books. It's a great way to do some shopping if you have, because we have a variety of topics that'll be covered. Wars, poems, Indians, cowboys, science fiction for teens, just a whole variety.
Ms. Tony, tell, tell them what you told me. Why are we putting the caboose out at the WildHog Road?
Because I want it to be a welcome center.
No?
What?
What'd you tell me?
Oh.
I was beginning and the end to a train.
I'm sorry. But Mike wants, he wants it to be down where the, the.
Where the engineer is.
Pat Mack is. And I told him, I said, no, 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 having the end up there and while the beginning down.
Makes plan sense.
Hey, at least golf hammock's going to have a beginning and end, right? Thank you.
Commissioner Stevens?
I would like to invite everyone to come to the Michigan Church of God's annual Christmas Gala. And that is at Saturday.
It's not this coming, it's the following. Nineteenth, Saturday at seven o'clock, I believe it is. And then Sunday morning at ten thirty.
There you go. That would like to attend and hear some good music. Please come in. Parade. Oh.
I had some county commissioners that, eight county commissioners that said, I'll, I'll be there. I was fine with it. I was fine myself.
Oh, what'd you?
My intention was to be there, but my husband started going down. He was in the UCI.
Well, the thing's Mike said he's going to the sheriff's birthday party.
Yeah.
I was playing with my kids, watching football. And he said, I'll, I'll be there. And they had all the kids running up and picking up all the candy. He says, it was covered. Thank you, Mr. Rippon.
And for the record, all those kids were not mine.
What?
I'm not going to go over that for a second.
What?
Okay, but if you don't get them.
Go ahead.
You're on that?
All right.
Yes, he does.
Chiefland, December twelfth, Chiefland Christmas Festival at the Trading Depot Park, ten AM, parade at six PM, if this is correct. Cedar Key, Christmas in the Park Boat Parade in Santa Clam all day, also on the twelfth. And then Inglis Christmas Parade is on the twelfth and a party at the community center. Parade starts at four. Bring your walking shoes. So, so there's a lot of parades coming up this weekend, a lot of Christmas activities in your neighborhood, in your community. I did have the pleasure of attending the firefighter one graduation at Department of Public Safety on Friday night. I believe there were nine new firefighters. Is that right?
Ten graduated class from different agencies.
Ten graduated. So there was representation from Levy County Fire, from Cedar Key Fire, Fanning Springs Fire, I believe, had some representation.
Bronson.
Bronson. It was a very, very nice ceremony for the firefighters. And then, of course, also on the twelfth, as if we didn't have enough to do, the Sons of Ambettes and the Ambettes Post eighty-eight, along with the BFW Post from Chiefland. I never get to get that number right.
Fifty-six twenty-five.
Fifty-six twenty-five would be Chris Payton and the Reach Across America Ceremony at Rosemary Cemetery. So if you don't have anything else to do, come by. At noon, we will begin the, the brief laying and the ceremony. So, an eventful day, to say the least, we'll do some, we'll own these numbers. But I think that's all I have. Do I hear a motion to pay these bills?
As the mayor's bills are presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All favors, you can probably say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Minutes from October sixth.
Minutes.
I didn't see anything.
I'll take a, take an entertaining motion to approve minutes.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion through by Rock, second by Commissioner Jordan. All favor, please stand by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. We're going to take a very, 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 very brief break because we have some folks here for a workshop. It's supposed to start at eleven in this下午.
Regarding what Ann and Brown was talking about, what are the law enforcement options regarding Mr. Nichols? That's what I was curious about. What are the options?
Don't go, that's why we asked the board to look into nothing.
You're talking about arresting him for something? Is that what you're, that's awesome.
So, this meeting is in a recess for like three minutes.